Hi, good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. Welcome to the 2024 Candidates Forum. On behalf of the Doherty Chamber of Commerce, we thank you for taking your time and being here today. The Chamber of Commerce exists to foster business development and and understanding, foster community development within our community, and also promote and educate our community members. So, once again, we thank you for being here tonight and taking time out of your busy day, time is a limited resources for all, a limited resource for all of us. We don't know how much of it that we have. So, thank you for taking some time out of your busy day to be here with us, to be a little bit more informed. We would also welcome you back to join us on Wednesday, two days from tonight, on October 16th, to join us for the School Board Candidates Forum, same place, same time, right here in this room, from 6:00 to 8:00. A special thank you to the League of Women Voters out of Pasadena to help us schedule, coordinate, and moderate this event. Before I hand this, the, the mic over to our moderator, I would invite you to please join me in saluting our great nation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and with that, I'll hand it over to our moderator, Joan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I also want to express my appreciation for everyone who's taken the time to be here tonight. Of course, to have a democracy that works, we need an informed and participating populace, and that's why you're all here. So, thank you for playing your part. I want to recognize the people who are helping to make tonight possible. Kathryn Gravzi, please stand up, and she's the one who's really put the work into it. We will have a timekeeper who is, plays a very important part in tonight, and Hester Bell, thank you very much for being here. And we have two question sorters, so you all should have, does everybody have white cards? If you don't, then there is somebody who will be handing out cards, raise your hand if you've written a question on the card, and hold it up, and it will be collected. The questions will be brought to the question sorter, and we will present the questions to our candidates. If your question is not read, it's been probably incorporated into another similar question. We will try and get to all of the questions tonight that we possibly can. I want to thank the candidates for being here. We have, let me see if I can see it, Jim Kirchner and Martin Calderon. Thank you for both being here. Before we get started, I want to remind you to silence your phones, and please refrain from applauding until the end, it just makes it go a little bit easier. So, the purpose of a candidate forum is to provide voters with information they need to help them decide who to vote for between the candidates listed on their ballot, and it defeats the purpose of the forum and could provide an unfair advantage if only one candidate is present. And that is the case tonight, where in two of the districts that are being contested, there was one candidate from each of those districts who could not...
District 7 was unopposed.
Unopposed, thank you very much. District 7 is unopposed, so in one district, which is District 3, Hector Martinez was not able to join us this evening, so his opponent, Vin Trong, would you like to stand up and be recognized? Thank you for being here, Vin. Has provided a statement, which I will read to you.
Hello, my name is Vin Trong, I hope I pronounced that right, and I am honored to be running for Duarte City Council, District 3. As a longtime resident of Duarte, a father raising my two boys here, and a dedicated community leader, I'm deeply committed to the future of our city. For four years, I have served as mayor and council member, working hard to make Duarte a place where families thrive, businesses succeed, and our neighborhoods stay safe and vibrant. My professional experience as an insurance broker, real estate agent, and member of various advisory councils and ADHOC committees for LA County and Duarte have given me a broad understanding of the challenges we face and the opportunities we can seize. I believe in transparency, collaboration, and listening to the concerns of all residents. Whether it's tackling important issues like public safety, homelessness, or economic development, I've always focused on practical solutions that reflect the needs of our diverse community. My opponent is not attending this forum, I will always, but I will always listen to you, answer your questions, and be fully accountable. I ask for your support in continuing to make Duarte the best place to live, work, and raise a family. Together, we can ensure a brighter future for our city.
I want to remind the candidates who will be participating that by participating in this event, we, we are recording, is that correct? Are we recording?
Yeah, it sums up, yes.
So, this event is being recorded, and by participating in the event, you agree not to use any portion of the video recordings or images of this event for any campaign activities or materials. Do you agree? Thank you very much. And we will be posting the recording on the League of Women website, on our YouTube channel, so it will be available. If you want to share it, you can share it with other people who might be interested. The League of Women Voters of Pasadena area is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages informed and active participation in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. The League never supports or opposes candidates for elective office or political parties, but sometimes takes positions on ballot measures. Both of the candidates have been informed of ground rules, and they have accepted these ground rules, and mainly it's to be civil. And I don't know if there is anything, if you have any questions about them, I'd be happy to answer them. I think that they're pretty straightforward. So, on November 5th, Duarte residents living in Districts 2, 3, and 7, as we mentioned, will be voting on their city council representatives in addition to the presidential election. The Duarte City Council is comprised of seven members who are directly elected by Duarte voters. The current city council district map was selected on April 12, 2022, following a rigorous redistricting process. The adopted map establishes seven districts, with Districts 2, 3, and 7 up for election in this November. Districts 1, 4, 5, and 6 are up for election in 2026. To learn more about your district, you can go to the city's redistricting website. Currently, Vin Trong represents District 2, Jody Schultz represents District 3, and Tony Lewis represents District 7. One city council member will be selected to fill the seats in each of these districts for a term of four years, expiring in 2028. For those interested in pursuing a city council seat in the future for future elections, the nomination period runs from Monday, July 15th to Friday, August 9th, 2024, which actually is past, so that would be good for future knowledge. The council serves as a legislative body for this city and is responsible for establishing city policies, adopting city ordinances and resolutions, holding public hearings, adopting the city's budget, and authorizing city expenditures. City council also appoints the city manager, city attorney, and the members of city commissions and committees. In response to a ballot initiative filed in 2023, the Duarte City Council, at its June 25, 2024 meeting, adopted a resolution to add a cannabis retail sales and tax measure to the November 5, 2024 general municipal election ballot, something that we wanted to make sure you're all aware of, in case your questions may arise around this issue. And so, register voters, there are in the ordinance, it permits up to two retail cannabis dispensaries and to tax cannabis businesses up to 10% of grocery receipts. Prior to making the decision, the city council held two workshops and engaged a third-party consultant to research, provide information, and help to inform the public on this, and so if you have questions about this, you can feel free to ask them at the appropriate We are going to begin, let me see, there are some, there's some information back on the table. When I close, I'm going to tell you a little bit about that information. So, we're giving each candidate a chance to go first. Jim will go first to begin with, and then, um, no.
Martin.
Martin, sorry. Martin, you will go first next. So, your first question?
Opening statement.
Oh, yes, please start with your opening statement, sorry.
Thank you to the Doherty Chamber of Commerce. Thank you to the Doherty Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters of Pasadena for presenting this forum. I'm Jim Kirchner, running for city council District 2 seat. Kathy and I have been married very happily for over 56 years and living in Doherty for over 40 of those years. We have two sons who graduated from Doherty schools and are professionally successful. I've been a results-oriented public servant for the city of Doherty for over 35 years, including having served on the Doherty Planning Commission as a commissioner and as chairperson, currently serving as a commissioner on the Public Works and Traffic Safety Commission for over 20 consecutive years, making positive safety enhancements in our community. And while serving as a council member for 12 years and mayor three times, we dramatically enhanced Doherty by building the Doherty Teen Center, the Doherty Senior Center, the Doherty Performing Arts Center, and preserving the 1909 Doherty Schoolhouse through our partnership with the Old Spaghetti Factory. Doherty will always be our kind of town, and we love it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Martin Calderon. I have been a resident of the city of Doherty for 22 years and a resident of the 2nd District for 17 years. I'm a proud Doherty High School graduate. I have served in the community as a Public Safety City Commissioner for the past six years. I was a part of the Doherty Youth and Family Committee for two years before its disbandment, and I also serve in the Doherty Arts Ad Hoc Committee. I am a product of this great city, and I'm running to give back to the community that's given me so much. As your elected representative, I look forward to strengthening our youth programs through our Parks and Rec Department to attract young families and prevent further school closures. I look forward to enhancing programs for seniors where they can feel safely and they can build community, keeping our parks and sidewalks safe while working with the county and state governments. As with six years of dedicated service as a Public Safety City Commissioner, I have tirelessly fought to enhance safety and strengthen our trust between our community, city staff, and our law enforcement. I believe everyone who wants to live in Doherty should be able to afford to live in Doherty, and I look forward to being a strong voice for Andrus Doherty families and hope to earn your support.
Thank you. I'm going to give the first question to you, Martin. What are the three most important challenges facing your city in the coming years, and what would you do to meet these challenges?
Of course. So, for starters, I think all issues are important, and labeling three as the most important isn't really something I do. However, when I was out canvassing, one of the biggest concerns that people had was with homelessness, and I know the city has taken some steps to alleviate that crisis. We have a homeless outreach coordinator that goes out there every day to provide resources to that, to the community, whether it be getting people into drug programs, drug therapy, or getting them hotel vouchers, or a place to just go ahead and spend the night. We're working towards getting them out there. I know another huge topic of conversation is crime. As a Public Safety City Commissioner, I've seen firsthand how hard the law enforcement in our community work, how hard they try to build a community, and I look forward to supporting them. And the third highest one would be the closure of Andrus Doherty and what a potential rezoning of the school would, unintended consequences a rezoning would bring to our community.
Thank you, Jim.
We have a lot of vacancies in town and vacancies for businesses, and that's, when I was on the council before, we had a real boom and a lot of growth going on, and since then, a lot of challenges have come about. We need to start filling those businesses again. We have a lot of residents, our population is growing little by little, but we have some new buildings coming in, and we're going to be growing, but we're not offering a lot of businesses, new businesses. We also need to revitalize our local businesses that are there now and give them some support to help them grow. And then, we also have mobility issues that aren't being addressed well in the city. We've done a tremendous job in some ways, but we still have sidewalks that are dangerous to travel on. We have sidewalks with driveways that are sloping, and if you're walking with a cane or in a wheelchair, there are a lot of challenges, just getting over that to get on the other side of a driveway. So, I think there's a lot more we can be doing. We're doing ADA, but I think we can do ADA plus.
Thank you. And this next question, we'll begin with you, Jim. Is Duarte financially sound? What are your plans to improve the financial management?
Well, financially, our city is doing very well, much better than we were 20 years ago. We have a surplus, I believe, in the 70% to 80% range now of our budget, our annual budget, and that's really terrific. If we work on our businesses, kind of get some income stream back from, from that. We get a lot of money from retail, but only if we have businesses providing those funds. We have a lot of expensive things, there are a lot of grants that we get, and we need to keep pursuing grants for our Parks and Rec, for our youth programs, and I think there's just lots of opportunities for us.
Martin?
I agree, we could do a lot more, grant writing. I know there's a lot of money out there, we pay a lot of taxes. As a council member, I want to make sure we get as much of that tax money back into Doherty to work on infrastructure, to work on ADA accessibility, and most importantly, to work on expanding services to seniors and expanding services to children.
Thank you. And Martin, since we've been talking a little about businesses, what will you do to streamline processes to help businesses open?
Of course. Well, like my opponent here mentioned, Mr. Kirchner, the sad reality is we have a lot of empty businesses in the city, and we have a lot of businesses that come in, but unfortunately close as soon as they open, and we need to come up with a retention plan. We need to talk to neighboring cities to see what they're doing, what's working, what's not working. We need to talk to our chamber to see any ideas they have, we need to reach out to the state. I know there's a lot of programs at the state level we could bring for people that want to start a business before they even open a business. With the COVID-19 pandemic, we saw a lot of our small businesses take a hit that they simply couldn't recover from. And with my experience working with the state government, with the county government, I want to bring as many resources back to Doherty to make sure we have our small businesses that feel supported and that feel like they're heard. I mean, don't get me wrong, I love McDonald's, I love Planet Fitness, but that's not what gets people over to Doherty. It's places like Janet's Mediterranean Cuisine, like J&amp;A's Cafe, like Mutiny Fitness, that get people to visit our city, and I need, and we need to make sure we're doing everything we can to, one, keep them happy, keep them engaged, but also to make sure we keep attracting those kind of businesses to our city.
And what would you do to attract them?
We can go ahead and partner with our state, with our state government to bring in resources, come up with events where we could host forums for people that are thinking of maybe taking that step to open a business, bring people that are experts in the field that could tell them what documents they need to fill out, what grants are available for them, and take it from there.
Thank you very much. And Jim?
Well, I think it would be good if we asked the residents the types of businesses they would like to have, and I know there's a huge wish list for that, but I think it would give the city some guidance and perhaps doing some marketing, that letting business owners or other businesses in other areas know that we're looking for this type of thing, and if you're providing that kind of service, we're interested, and we want to work with you, and we want to get you in town because our residents are looking for that. I've also seen where some cities are offering grant programs to businesses or to help support them, either beginning or if they're struggling, and a lot of them are struggling with COVID, just still recovering from that, and I think we all know that it's been hard. It's hard for us just living too, but I think the city can do much more in helping to attract businesses that the people would really want to go to. We don't need, you know, 15 pizza parlors.
Okay, thank you. And you have both talked a little bit about safety, and we have a question that community safety is a concern, and so what do you do, what do you propose to help curb fires and maintain the beauty of the San Gabriel Riverbed? And we will start with you, Jim.
I'm sorry, it sounded like there's several things. Could you repeat that, or?
Okay, so what would you propose to help curb fires and maintain the beauty of the San Gabriel Riverbed?
Clean it up, to start with. There's a lot of overgrowth in there, but the, the riverbed has so many jurisdictions that are involved in it, and it's not a city riverbed. I believe the Corps of Engineers has a principal part of it, and several cities are boundaries to that, but the, the water flow is intermittent, the, comes from the dams above the canyon, and so it would be nice, and I know it's been worked on before, of having, trying to establish some kind of a park system in there to where we could have regular water and beautify it, and I think we just need to work on that. I think we need to make it happen because it's there, it's beautiful when it, everything is working right, but as far as the fire, that needs to be cleaned up. We've done a great job in our city trying to protect the hills and things to keep the growth down, and we've been fortunate, but the river, we don't really interact with directly. It would have to be a broader county and beyond arrangement to make things happen there.
Thank you. And Martin?
We can always come up with a community cleanup to make sure we're getting rid of debris out there. We can partner with our federal, with our federal congressperson, who has the funds sometimes to directly clean them themselves, work with the county, and again, we know fire season is almost a year long now here in California, so we can go ahead and also come up with programs, come up with events to go ahead and not only educate, but bring awareness to our community of steps they could take to prevent wildfires, to look out for dangerous wildfire conditions, and what they could do to go ahead and prevent, and maybe even if they notice something, they could clean it up themselves.
Another question from our audience is a Latino concern. What does the role, what role does the Latino community play in our district, and how could you improve their involvement? We begin with you, Martin.
Of course, you know, we have a lot of Latinos in our community, we can start going, we can start in making a lot of our outreach in Spanish because a lot of people simply don't know the language, and that's, you can't break that barrier without going the extra mile and providing resources to them in Spanish. We could go ahead and do more community events with the Latino community, we can go ahead and start up events such as, groups such as the Neighborhood Watch Parties, that we can go ahead and really get to know our community one-on-one. I think we really need to pick up on that once again, because I, when I was out there canvassing, I know there's, there's needs, I know people want to get involved, they just, more often than not, don't know how to get involved, and we really need to be out there knocking doors, asking them what they need, what resources we could bring to them, but most importantly, how we can get them out to our commission meetings, our city council meetings, and how to make them get more involved.
Thank you, Jim.
Well, I think Martin hit it, that we don't have a good way of getting people involved. It's not always easy to break into something, and government is kind of an interesting thing that's not exactly open as much as we'd like to think that it is. You kind of have to know what you need before you can go and ask for it. I think we have a lot of great programs, Latino certainly, but we also have trouble getting candidates to run for things, to get involved and to help their community. We have, the district that was unopposed this time has been unopposed twice. It's been an appointed position, it's hard to get people to get involved and do that, and so somehow we need to energize a little bit more. I, I think we have great participation, we've got a great mixed community, but it can always be better.
Thank you. And now, we're going to focus on a question about your schools, and the question is, how can the city council support your schools and help to reverse the declining enrollment? And we will start with you, Jim.
Well, we used to have regular meetings between the school board and the city council, and those have been, I think they've gone to annual now, and it used to be every six months, and it should probably go to quarterly. I've heard that mentioned, I think the mayor has mentioned that before, that he'd like to see that happen, and I think it's great. The school district doesn't always extend itself, I think, as much as it could to the community. I believe they have a little shortcoming, and they think their clients are the students and the parents, which is absolutely true, but it's also the rest of the community, because the whole community is interested in the success of our schools, and I think this school board needs to go out a little bit more, but I think the city can help that by meeting more often with the government side and just discussing things and looking at ways that we can work together and plans that will benefit both of us, because strong schools makes for a strong community. So, yes, city is interested, we just need to really build that.
Thank you. Martin?
Yes, so I actually worked for an after-school program over at Beardsley Elementary for about five years, and I saw firsthand a lot of vans come in from outside of the city after school to pick up our kids, take them to the Boys and Girls Club, take them to surrounding cities to enjoy some programs, and I feel like we, as a city, could do a lot more for our kids. We need to reimagine our Parks and Rec Department, our Parks and, the programs they offer, we need to get input from the community to see what kind of programs they want our kids to participate in, to keep our kids in Doherty. I feel the city could also make sure we are including a lot of affordable housing on all our new school, on all our new projects, because we cannot afford to put luxury above affordability, because if you look at now, houses are about $600,000, you can't find anything under that. I don't know many young families, up-and-coming families that can afford that, so other families look at neighboring cities and go there instead, and in order for us to continue seeing an rise in enrollment, we need to make sure we are an equitable city that welcomes growing families, and more importantly, that supports them.
Thank you very much. And Martin, what will you do to improve internet provider options in the city?
I mean, all it takes is going to Facebook to see how many people are not content with the providers we have here in the city. I know Frontier is slowly making its way into our city. We need to make sure we make ourselves available to other companies, we need to make sure we, we're the kind of city that attracts them to us, we got to go... sure we, we're the kind of city that attracts them to us. We gotta go to our neighboring cities, talk to them, seeing what they've done to attract other providers. We need to work on our infrastructure. Again, it comes down to do we even have the infrastructure to support multiple, uh, internet providers to come to our city. And if we don't, what can we do to uptake and do that? Infrastructure change is needed to make sure we have that. And again, it comes down to grant writing. It comes down to having an active role everywhere in our city and making sure our grant writers are doing their job.
Thank you. And Jim?
There was a, a study that was done, uh, I believe a number of years ago about providing internet service to the city, um, for everybody that would be free or at least, um, available that, that worked. And we have, um, I don't know where that went. I think we should look at that again to make it easier for people to get internet access. Um, I know that that was a problem when, um, kids started getting, um, going to school and they'd get, um, iPads or computers, but they didn't have internet at home. And so that's when the discussion was going on. It's a crime that we don't have better service. And it's unfortunate that we do have service up and down. I don't know that we're the unique, uh, city in that. I think it's just a very complex issue, and we just need to look at it. Um, I think there's solutions, but they may be expensive. And so that's something that may be part of the solution too. I think we need a strategic plan, frankly, to talk about a lot of these things and figure out the best way to go about doing it and start doing something.
Thank you. Now, both of you have mentioned a little bit about sidewalks and accessibility. The question here is, how can the city council improve services and access for our senior citizens? So you've mentioned the need. I think the question is, how would you do that? And what other services would you bring to the senior, um, citizens of your community?
It used to be, uh, with few, if you were handicapped and, and challenged, that you stayed at home. You just didn't go out. And now people are much more acceptable to their problem and, and try to adjust, and they want to go out and do things. And, and people are more receptive on it, that they, you don't get shamed so much anymore. Not to say that that doesn't happen, but it's, um, far better than what it used to be. And so I think we've fallen behind on, on some of the things. We do have, I mentioned, great improvements, but we do studies for our streets to see what need to be improved and everything. And we're a little slower on doing studies on sidewalks, I think, and, and the interfacing issues. Um, I saw a picture earlier of two or three-inch rise on a sidewalk, where, um, if you run, if you're an electric vehicle or certainly a wheelchair, you hit that, you're gonna go headfirst on, down on the ground. And there's no excuse for having that. And I've seen others not quite that big, but I think, um, that's, there's so many things. And I think if we start talking about it, people will start identifying issues that they experience. And that's how I kind of picked up on this, that we had a situation where we were in, um, my wife was in a wheelchair for a while, uh, following, uh, an operation. And we realized there are a lot of challenges when you're in a wheelchair, wheelchair and, and things like this. And so I started noticing there's more. We're not in it frequently, but, um, I'm sure that others can contribute a lot in, in a group to help that.
Thank you. And Martin?
Well, you know, we have multiple living assisted facilities here in the city. I would start by having town halls at those facilities and listening to the concerns of the seniors firsthand. Then maybe we could also go ahead and look at the big picture when creating plans for our, our beautification in the cities. Look at the kind of trees we're planting and think of what effects they're gonna have 20, 30 years from now, because we could, we see a lot of trees they planted years ago uprooting our, our sidewalks. And we need to make sure for future projects, we do an environmental project, an environmental study to make sure all the trees we're planting are not trees that will destroy our sidewalks or that will present challenges to our seniors in the future. And we also need to have a task force that can continuously goes out into our neighborhoods, looking at the state of the sidewalk, looking at our ramps, and making sure they're continuously upkept and ready for use every day.
Thank you. So I'm going to use your comments to segue into the next question. And that is, how can city government ensure transparency and improve communications with residents?
We can go ahead and use social media a lot more effectively. I feel like more people are hopping on social media. We can go ahead and do newsletter that goes out to our community, maybe quarterly of every project that we have going on, of all the money being spent, how that money's being allocated, where the money's coming from. And we need to make sure we're getting people to our council meetings. I don't know if you guys have attended council meetings, but there's very little people that attend. We need to make, we need to see how we can go ahead and get them out there to our, to all our meetings.
Thank you. And Jim?
The city does a pretty good job on getting information out, except when it comes to the website. Um, it's very difficult to navigate through the website on the city. They redesigned it several times. Um, I was on the original planning when they were talking about it. And it's, um, it was a challenge then, and it's a challenge now. And they're very easy to, to say in, when they have events, and they advertise a lot of events and have a lot of activities, and the references, go to accessduarte.com. What, you go there and you, you're kind of left looking at it. You don't know where to buy tickets for something. You don't know where to sign up, unless you know it's in Parks and Rec. And then you have to find different committees and things. It's just not real intuitive or inviting to use. And I, I think they just, when they look at these things, how they're gonna change it, I think they need to talk with residents who would like to use it or have used it and find out what kind of issues they have, because I think people want information, but we shouldn't be making it so difficult to get it.
Thank you very much. Now, the first question that I asked you was, what are the three most important challenges facing your city? And what would you do to meet these challenges? So you've answered that question, but there's two more questions that have come in. So clearly, people are looking for more information. And they want to know what your, your primary concern is for Duarte, and how exactly you'll address it.
Well, traffic is, is a real problem, and a lot of that we can't easily control because it's usually, uh, overflow from the freeway. But that can shut down our Huntington Drive real quick. And, uh, the signals are not synchronized well. The, um, I've always been in favor of having blinking, um, left turn signals to where you don't have to sit and wait through a full cycle to, uh, of signal changes. There's just a lot of things we can, can control in our traffic. Um, but as far as other things, businesses, I, I'm sorry, what was the first part of?
Your main concern.
Main concern.
And how you will address it.
Okay, there, there are so many. But, um, traffic I know is there, on everybody's mind. I, I'll just end it there. Thanks.
Thank you. Martin?
Yes. For me, as a public safety city commissioner, it has to be homelessness. So I've seen firsthand the impact our homeless outreach coordinator has had in our community. We are slowly seeing a difference. I know we would like to see it more of it, and we would like to see it faster. However, what I plan on working with elected, with elected officials at different levels across multiple levels of government to make sure our coordinator and our public safety director has all the resources he needs to ensure that our numbers are on the right track and on the right direction. We here in Duarte are very lucky because we have, we're in a unique situation. We have an assembly member and a senator that are sisters. So it would be really easy to bring them together and to tackle the issue of homelessness head-on with a plan, with a set plan from the start, rather than, you know, having different perspectives, different ideologies come together. And we can go ahead and really make a change and make sure our public safety office has all the resources they need to tackle it.
Thank you very much. And what experience do you have, do each of you bring to, or potentially bring to the city council? And do you have experiencing, experience in managing a public entity budget? Martin?
Yes. Well, I know I'm young, but I've had a, a chance to work with government at different levels. I've had the chance of working for the US House Representatives, for the US Senate, for the California State, and also for the county. Understanding the complex relationship between our city and all forms of government is extremely important to bring back resources to our community in the form of grants, county and state budget allocations. We pay a lot of taxes. We need to bring as much resources back to our community. I don't have any experience with a, with budget. However, I do have experience with making sure the budget allocated for certain events, for certain, um, buildings is used correctly and is maximized.
Thank you. And Jim?
Well, I have, um, experienced 12 years on the city council, and we handled a lot of tough issues at the time. And one of them was a utility tax that we had to implement. Taxes are never popular, but we were very low on, on funds and we, um, I became mayor during that period because I think none of the other council members wanted to be mayor while we were gonna talk about taxes. And, but I took it on and sold the idea that if we don't have this, we're gonna start losing a lot of the services that we've had. And I'm not saying that we do a tax now, but I'm just saying I have experience in that. I, I dealt with budgets, uh, and our budget right now is in, in good shape. But I've also been on the planning side of a lot of things that have, uh, come into town that I mentioned earlier, that are, um, were really starting points of building a much stronger community and a senior center and the, um, um, teen center were two of those. And those can certainly be expanded. Uh, we're constrained by space a little bit. I think the teen, teen center has some expansion opportunities, and we need to do that. The teen center is a huge benefit to our city. And the senior center gets a lot of its attendance, people going there from out of town because it's such a great program. And so we just, we can enhance those things more.
Thank you. And so we have a question that many sidewalks have greenery encroaching on their right-of-way. So how would you skillfully work with property owners to encourage and support them to clear the greenery that interfere, interferes with safe passage?
We can go ahead and come up with something as simple as a best yard contest. A lot, a lot of it comes down to getting the people excited to do stuff. When we, we could apply it, we can go ahead and have a task force that goes around, walks our neighborhoods and looks at what needs to be completed and go ahead and maybe put a friendly sign, put a friendly note on their door and see if that works. But I believe if we institute a contest with maybe even just a price of posting their, the best yard of the week on social media might get people to say, hey, maybe I want to do this. Maybe I want to make sure my yard looks the best this neighborhood so I could get this bragging rights or something.
Thank you. And Jim?
We've had a beautification program, uh, in the past, and it was similar to what Martin was just suggesting, that, um, home, people would beautify their homes. They'd really clean them up. And then there was, um, there'd be voting. Groups in town, uh, service groups would go around and vote on different areas and identify homes. And so that was a way, and they got some prize out of it, if they were selected. And so that was a way to get people to do more things. That program I don't believe is around anymore. And maybe we just need to reexamine doing that in a little different way, because we've had some good things in the past and we still have some issues. Or maybe they're coming back in a little different way. So the task force is certainly something to do.
Thank you.
And, and that involves our community and getting people into the system. If they want to get involved in government, that's a good way to get on a task force. So you've kind of find out how cities function a little bit. Getting on commissions is the same way.
Thank you. Um, and then, again, we have a question that addresses something that you have provided some answer to, but they're asking for a little more detail on the homelessness problem that is now, um, has people in shopping areas, parking lots, and people feel that those areas are filled with unhoused persons. And so they would like to hear a little more specifically what a plan would be to address that. So we'll start with you, Jim.
Well, there are a lot of plans for that. It's not an easy issue to deal with. There are, um, and, and there's a motel on Huntington Drive that is in Monrovia, actually. It's on a, the Duarte border that I believe is being now not a motel, but, um, a housing for homelessness. They're homeless, uh, individuals. It's, um, it's a growing problem. I don't know what the real root of that is, and I know there are a lot of different, uh, levels of government looking at it. I don't think we're gonna be able to solve it on our own. We have our code enforcement out and, and dealing with it, but it's just kind of pushing the problem. It's not really solving the problem. And so, um, I know Martin has talked about having some, um, more experience in that, and that's great. Uh, there's a lot of people that know about things and our city is in contact with them. And I'm not just up to date on where they are on those, but it's something that I, I think is important, and we do need to deal with it.
Thank you. Martin?
Well, like Jim mentioned, that hotel's actually on the Monrovia side. So I feel like a good first step to take is maybe having monthly meetings with the Monrovia City Council as well, as maybe involving MAD, which is the Monrovia Assus Duarte Council, to really bring everyone together in the same room and have a meeting. So everyone's on the same page, at least of the situation that's going, of everything that's going on. We also need to do better, uh, do a better job of having people that see something actually get on the phone and report it to the city, because a lot of people just go on Facebook and, you know, they're, they're seeing a lot of things going on, but then you talk to Larry Brissette or you talk to our substation and they have no idea because nobody calls it in. So maybe go, we could go ahead and create events here in the city as well, where we bring the community together and tell them, okay, well, what are you guys seeing? What, what's going on? Where, what do you guys hear? And then bring that to, back to the Monrovia area and talk to their council, talk to the county, get the county involved to, so we can all be on the same page. Because I think there's no communication going on right now, and there's just a lot of rumors that get started. And when rumors get flying, nothing gets done.
Thank you. And so communicating with the people, we've talked a bit about that, of just communication of the council with your constituents. So the question is, how will you communicate with people who don't use social media? Martin?
Well, like, like Jim mentioned, we need to make sure we're more involved with our district as well. So maybe partner with a member of the Board of Education who oversees with your district and hosting maybe quarterly, if not monthly, town halls in, somewhere in your district. Maybe bring out, like, coffees with the sheriff, but maybe make it coffees with your council member, with your board member, where we listen, where we host the community and hear firsthand what they think is going on, what they think that needs fixing, and maybe what's even working. So we could get that started, and that is slowly going to make it so that they know we're listening, and maybe they'll come into our council meetings, get more involved, and we can start filling those empty positions in our commissions that desperately need it.
Thank you. And Jim?
The, um, county of Los Angeles has an area, uh, that's close to, attached to Duarte that is in the school district boundaries, but not in the city boundaries. And they have a town council down there, and they talk about, um, a lot of things, primarily for their area. But I, and they come into Duarte a lot, but I think we really need to interact a little bit more with the town council to get them involved and issues that they're having, to help us understand what we can do in our community as well to help them, because there's a lot of crossover in, uh, in need. And a lot of them will shop here because it's closer than other places. But, um, I don't know that we're getting our, putting our best foot forward on that.
Thank you. And to follow up on that, Jim, since there is a budget surplus, how could the city council use some of this surplus? could the city council use some of this surplus to serve homeless needs?
Carefully. Because it's, I think it would draw everything that we had. And I'm not so sure it would solve it. But we certainly need to start with allocating something towards resolution. And it might be something to look at, as much as I don't like the idea of, of our closed businesses on Huntington Drive, turning those into temporary places. But there may be other places in town that we could have some housing as well. I don't know why Monrovia has one and we can't, for example. And we can allocate funds for that. You don't want to get into where it's going to be a drain, and you'd have to look for other resources, support from the state, the county, and perhaps the federal government as well. Because everybody knows that there's a problem. And if you're willing to kind of step in and take something on, I think there's some help that can be available, financial help. And we'll have to go after that.
Thank you. Martin?
Well, as we all know, the county is actually facing a shortage of sheriffs and police officers. We here in Doherty have a great public safety director who has done everything he can to ensure that we do not feel the effects of those shortages. However, with a surplus, I think as a council member, I would do everything I can to ensure the public safety director has all the resources he needs to ensure patrolling doesn't take a hit. And to maybe add another homeless outreach coordinator to be out there in the community. Because I know we have a lot of unhoused people here in Doherty, and we need to make sure we are going to them, maybe if not once a day, twice a day, to ensure they're getting into the programs they need, to ensure they're at least being offered a place to stay, a place to go. And that's where I would spend the surplus.
Thank you. And this is going to be the last question. And then we'll go to closing statements. And so Martin, if you are not reelected, how will you stay engaged with city issues whether elected or not?
Well, I'm not elected yet, but I, well, you know, my position as public safety commissioner is going to be up in December. So I plan on reapplying to stay engaged. If I'm not elected, I plan on keeping myself engaged in the city at that level. Maybe go ahead and work with the mayor's youth council as well to get more young people involved in politics, because I think that's what we desperately need, more young people involved. That way, when they age out of Doherty High School, we can have them come to our council meetings. I went ahead and canvassed a lot for this seat, and I got a lot of really good ideas from people. I'd like to go ahead and maybe start up our neighborhood watch for my neighborhood, to have more people engaged, to have more people, you know, come up to us and tell, and just build community. Because I feel like so many people, you know, just work so much, they don't really have the time to get to know their neighbors. And I think that's a perfect, great step to do so.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, I also am not elected at this point, an elected official. I hope to be. But I do have 35 years of service to the city by being on commissions and task forces and on the council. And for the last 20 years, I've been on the traffic commission in town. And that's at the, that was my choice, as well as, it was my desire. It was the council's choice that I'd be on there. The council makes the appointments, and so they have to approve of what you're doing as well. But I would pursue staying on the commission or perhaps a different one, should I not be elected. Because my heart's in the community. I think there's a lot we can do. I do interact with people, and I encourage people to get involved, and I try to point them where to do that. If I'm on the council, I'd like to really reexamine the webpage again and make it easier for people to apply for things, to find information. And I, I just think there's a lot we can do there. And that's what, it's not even on my list of top things to do, but that's on my list of things that we really need to go after. So I will plan to stay involved, and that's if the council allows me to do that.
Thank you. And since you began, Martin, why don't you start with the closing statement?
Of course. Well, first and foremost, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on such a worthwhile event. Thank you all so much. But most importantly, I want to thank you all for being here. And to the people tuning in at home, thank you guys so much for giving us, giving us your afternoon. You know, my name is Martin Calderon. I'm a 22-year resident of Doherty, of the city of Doherty. And I'm a proud Doherty Unified School District graduate. And I'm running for the second district because I want to give back to a community that's made me the man I am today. I'm running because I want parents to feel comfortable with having their kids walking home from school alone. I'm running because I want parents to be able to put their kids into operated Parks and Rec-led youth programs. I'm running because I want seniors to feel like they can walk to the store safely because all our streets are ADA accessible. I'm running because I want seniors to feel like they belong, to feel like they're part of our community, but most importantly, to feel like their voice is heard. I'm running because I want to work with our school district to ensure no more schools close. You know, I don't want future generations to go through the, well, past generations went through when Northview closed down, and most recently when Andrus-Doherty closed down. I'm running because I want young families to come to Doherty, look at it home, and say, I can't afford to live here. I want to raise a family here in Doherty. But none of that is, is possible without electing leadership. And while institutional knowledge is great, we can't bring substantial change to Doherty without a fresh perspective, without an energized perspective, someone who went door knocking to tell our district his vision and ask theirs for theirs. It is our moral responsibility, I believe, to build a bench of new leaders, to prepare, prepare them and to make sure they're ready to take on challenges of tomorrow responsibly. It's important for us to learn when it's time for new leadership to take over. I put out my vision for Doherty today, and I hope you got to know me a little better. And I hope I earned your vote. Please vote Martin Calderon for council this November 5th.
Thank you. Jim?
Thank you again to the Doherty Chamber of Commerce and the League of Women Voters for allowing us to address the public this way. Many things have changed over the years. My record of commitment and involvement for over 40 years in Doherty shows I'm serious. And that part of me hasn't changed. I've served on the, as the Doherty Chamber of Commerce president, and then as executive director for nine years. I founded the Doherty Community Coordinating Council when I was mayor, and I'm currently serving that organization as its treasurer. I have served as Doherty salute to Route 66 Parade Chairperson and was on the original formulation committee. I was the Andrus-Doherty Statue Committee Chairperson. I received the Foothill Unity Center Heart in Hand Humanitarian Award in 2001 for my community contributions. I'm helping, I like helping the people of all ages, whether I know them or not. I'm results oriented. I believe my long time record of active involvement, commitment, and fulfillment to Doherty residents demonstrates that, including bringing Walmart to Doherty in 198, 1995, sorry. I offer that. The difference is my experience as the one of many reasons to vote for Jim Kirchner for Doherty City Council, District Two. I have leadership. I've demonstrated that, and I'm still moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now you can applaud. I want to thank you both. Excellent. And I want to tell you just about a few things we have available, tools that we have available for you on our back table. We actually, somebody brilliantly put a lot of things on one page that are really helpful. And so if you pick up this piece of paper, you can, you can get to the league website. And the league website can, you can register to vote, you can check your voter registration. And it will give you a lot of information about what is on the ballot. We have a site called Vote411. I think that is on here with, yes. So we have all of these accessible, thank you, boy, senior moments, QR codes. Vote411.org is a site that, it'll take you right to it, and it'll give you information on everything that is going to be on your ballot in your area in a nonpartisan way. And so this is fed by national, state, and local leagues in order to get that information to you. There's also, are there booklets back there? Did we bring some, just bookmarks, but we didn't bring in the booklets that, okay, the voter guides, are they back there? There are voter guides back there too, that will do pretty much the same thing. Yeah. And so, and there's an easy voter guide that you can get to through a QR code on here, LA County Election Resources, and Where's My Ballot. So if you have any question about, if you haven't gotten your ballot yet, and you want to know where it is, you can check if you've already voted and you want to make, see if they've got it. If you put it in the mail, you can check Where's My Ballot. Where, I don't happen to know where the vote, the nearest voting center is here. Does somebody, is it right, ah, I'm hearing, there is a voting center right here. So most of you should have received your ballots by now. Yeah, everybody's pretty much received it. And so you can already begin voting and put it into, there's boxes here, or voting centers here where they can bring it. And I, oh, and something that I plan on attending that I'm very excited about, thanks to Catherine, is this coming Thursday, there is a talk on civil discourse dialogue across differences, which is very pertinent to everything that's going on in our country today. That is from 6:00 to 7:30 at the All Saints Episcopal Church, 132 North Euclid Avenue in Pasadena. Are there flyers on the back table? You can pick these up. So there will be, we, Catherine has been scheduling regular talks that will be going on for the general public, sponsored by the league. So I encourage you to get onto the website and check. There's some really good ones even after the election that are coming up. So check in, stay involved, and thanks, join us, become a member, we're awesome. Oh, thank you all for coming tonight.